To the school committee meeting on March 22, 2022. Let's all stand and pledge allegiance. So Tom is running a little bit late, so I'll get the meeting started tonight. And he'll take over when he shows up. This is a public meeting. You can also access the meeting through the WebEx link. The access code is 23362842160, and the pass code is Tuesday. So the first item up is the approval of the warrant as presented. Anyone want to entertain a motion?
We didn't receive it yet.
What?
Yeah, we didn't get it.
Oh, I thought we had. I'm just following what's going along here, so that's gone. Never mind. Public participation. Everyone's welcome to participate. We have people in person who are welcome to participate, and we also have people who are welcome to participate by the web. It's the same access information as I just gave for calling in and dialing in. And just a reminder that any participant who has anything they want to share or communicate, you're limited to three minutes. So the first thing we're going to talk about is information and reports and any subcommittee reports.
Did you ask if there was public participation?
Oh, yes, well, okay, sorry. Come on up.
She didn't see any hands.
I didn't see any hands. I forgot to ask. Sorry about that. And your name, please?
My name's Erin Lapsley.
Nice to meet you, Erin.
Hi. I'm in my 13th.
There you go.
Hello?
Yes.
You can say if you want.
Um, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name's Erin Lapsley. I'm in my 13th year of teaching math at Burlington High. I am a member of the BEA. I am here today to try and paint a little bit of a picture of what a high school teacher's experience has been these past two years. I want to share this in hopes that you will have a better understanding of why we are looking for your support in the contract negotiations. The pandemic has upped the volume and intensity of students' needs. We have had to deal with students who are struggling emotionally, yet keep them on track academically. I have seen more students have meltdowns this year than in any year past. Panic attacks, anxiety, depression, lack of study skills, refusal to complete any work are just some of the aspects of teaching high school students this year. They are also more attached to their phone than ever before. Remote learning and hybrid learning may be effective in small doses, but having to teach that way for 11 months has caused this year to be a tough one for students and teachers. And this is no one's fault. In unprecedented circumstances, the district tried their best to come up with a solution when really there wasn't one. Teachers and students feel burnt out. Teachers just want to be able to do our jobs to the best of our abilities, and we want to feel heard by you when we voice our concerns. This is a time when we desperately need your support. Our bargaining team has spent months trying to negotiate aspects of the contract that would have no effect in helping our students. The team has finally had some success, but it is now nearing the end of March. The fourth quarter of the school year starts in less than two weeks. Let's find a resolution. You have teachers that are invested in the Burlington Schools, the district, and in this community. Teachers are done battling. The community doesn't want this to continue, and I'm sure you are all done, too. We are asking for your support. One, the six professional development days we have are not what we need, and it is not working. We appreciate the ideology behind teacher PD, but it is not making us better equipped in the classroom. So let's change the structure of it. It needs to be reworked, and we need you to listen to us and support us. Two, teachers in Burlington work more days than any other school district in Massachusetts, yet we do not get paid the most. We are asking for a pay increase of 2% to 2.5%. The current inflation rate makes most products cost 8% more today than it did a year ago today. So by asking for 2% or 2.5%, we are not really asking for a raise. Taking into account inflation, we are actually asking for a 5.5% to 6% decrease in our cost of living, which can be made up for by taking some of our PD days away. Please support us. Also, don't forget that this is a predominantly female profession. In Burlington alone, approximately 85% of our teachers are female. When many women have been driven out of the workforce because of the pandemic, please support us. More than anything, teachers are looking for your support. We have the same goal, to meet our students' needs. When teachers are shown respect, it gives us the energy and ability to step up for the students. Supporting a contract will go a long way to validating all of our goals. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin. Do we want to alternate between web and live? People who want to come in, or do anyone have their hand up?
Nobody right now on WebEx has their hand up.
No one on WebEx? Anyone else in the room like to speak? You good? All right, thank you. So then we'll move on.
Nobody on WebEx?
No, he just, I asked. So first up is subcommittee reports. I already asked about CPAC. There was nothing for CPAC. And would you like to talk, Mr. Foss?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick one. The town DEI Subcommittee will meet tomorrow night at 6:00. WebEx information can be found on the town website. That's it.
All right, thank you. Martha. Mrs. Simon.
I'd like to give a brief update on the negotiations with the teachers' union. I appreciate the teachers' frustration at not having a contract. I'm a little concerned about the information you have, given what you just described. We've made some offers. It sounded an awful lot like what you just said you're asking for, but I don't want to really get into the details in public. I feel like that's what negotiation sessions are for. Our last negotiations was on February 2. At that meeting, the school committee put forward a new proposal that we felt was very close, and the union expressed some sense that it felt like they felt there was movement. So I'm concerned about people saying there's no negotiations, there's no progress. However, it's been six weeks since that negotiation, and so everyone feels sort of stalemated, I think. And that's very frustrating. And I feel, maybe not equally frustrated, but I do feel frustrated that we've had to wait after that. Right after the February 2 meeting, Patrick Murphy, the union president, was quoted in the newspaper saying that he and the union felt there had been some good movement. So it doesn't help anybody for the last six weeks that there was some good movement in February. And our next meeting, our next bargaining session, is not until next week. But I just wanted to clarify that. We, you know, we've had a six-week pause, and it's been because of scheduling difficulties. There was a meeting that had to be canceled. We had a school vacation. You know, then there's finding times. Personally, at every one of our negotiating sessions for the last two or more years that I've been in these negotiating sessions, I have tried to be sure that at the end of that meeting we had at least one, if not two, meeting scheduled in advance. And that was my preference. It's not always worked that way. Sometimes we've been able to get a couple of dates. I also know, you know, it's been hard for the teachers. It's been hard for everybody with this pandemic, but teachers, you know, deserve to be recognized for what you folks have done for the last two years. It's just, I don't have words for it, you know. And I know that, you know, giving you a 10% raise would make you feel a lot more appreciated, but, you know, I don't have that money. The town isn't going to give it to us. So we do understand how hard you've been working. And then to not have a contract signed since last July is hard. And we know we all started the negotiations a year before the last contract ended. But then COVID happened, and we negotiated two memorandums of agreement since then. So we've been negotiating forever. And, you know, it feels like forever, and there's no new contract yet, and it's very frustrating. So I really recognize that. I really, we're looking forward to the next negotiating session. I'm hoping that we'll only need a couple more because I'm hoping that we are getting much closer. We also, in the meantime of all these years, we have about nine tentative agreements. So there are other issues beyond the salary and beyond the school year length and the professional development issues that have gotten a lot more press. We've made a number of tentative agreements. And for people who don't know how the negotiations work, a tentative agreement is things that we agree to if the contract is settled. So if we can agree on the last couple of things, then all those other things that we agreed to would go into place. And I feel like the union and the school committee reps and Dr. Conti have been on the same page on a number of issues. There's a couple of new areas that we've included in our tentative agreements that I think will help with our diversity and equity efforts. And there's other areas like that that I think, I know we're all on the same page. And where we disagree, I feel like we actually all want the same thing. We want what's best for the students in a way that supports the teachers. We don't agree entirely on how to get there. And we don't have an unlimited pot of money. But we do, you know, we've offered a number of things. We've increased our offer over the course of the last several months. So I just want to clarify from my perspective as a member of the negotiating team where I feel we are and my frustration along with yours that it's been so long since we've met the last time and how long it's taken us to, you know, negotiate. So I am hoping that next week we'll have some good progress. Maybe we'll, I keep thinking maybe we could settle it next time. I don't want to get my hopes up. And I hope it will be soon. And thank you. That's my report. And I think Mrs. Monica also wants to add something.
Thank you, Ms. Simon and Ms. Monica. You have something to add?
Yes. I'll be brief, though. So the lady that spoke said that you would like support, and we do support you. We unequivocally support you. I think if you look at the history of contracts, we have been very supportive as a school committee. I think we have managed our contracts in such a way that we attract great teachers. We have wonderful teachers. And we do appreciate you, and we do support you. The problem is that we can't agree to everything that the BEA leadership asks for. I don't think money is an issue. You mentioned a percentage that, you know, we're at least there. I mean, I don't know what kind of information you're getting, but that's not the holdup, folks. There have been suggestions that we could agree on relative to days. What we cannot do is we cannot add half-days without extending the school day every single day of the year because time on learning is a requirement by the state. Elementary level, it's 900 hours. Secondary level, it's 990 hours. At the elementary level, we barely make, we have maybe 15 hours at the most to spare, and that's stretching it. So if we were to put half-days into the contract, we would have to lengthen the school day, and we don't want to lengthen the school day. And I don't know how you feel, but I don't think you want to lengthen it either. But I could be wrong about that. And what I would suggest is that between now and the next contract, there'd be some sort of a working committee where teachers and parents get together and agree on what they could deal with. But big changes like that, I mean, we're talking big changes when you add back a whole lot of half-days and lengthen the school year. I mean, the school day, not the school year. So just as a recap, I totally support you. I want you to be the best-paid teachers anywhere, and I think you come close. You know, clearly not the top, but very close. I understand in many ways, more than I'd like to, how difficult this has been socially and emotionally for kids. We do hear you. We can't agree to everything. We're trying to come up with something that the union will accept and that we can live with. The money does not seem to be the problem from what you've said and I heard. I am a little frustrated. The meeting on the week of the 14th was canceled by the union reps, not by the school committee. We've been asking for dates, and we finally got a date the 28th of March, which was, for me especially, kind of frustrating. I mean, all that time passed, and I don't know why we couldn't meet. I was available any day. Martha was available.
Most days, yeah.
Most days. Maybe you should look at that.
Please stop doing it in public. Your Facebook comments don't match what you're saying here.
Yeah. I do support all of you, and I hope that this works out quickly.
Thank you, Ms. Monica. I have nothing to report as far as the Transportation Committee is concerned. There's been no updates since the last meeting. We're going to move on to the next item, Ways and Means. Roger, are you here?
President, but nothing of interest till later in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item would be student representative. Brooke, are you available? Brooke is not here, I'm being told, so we can move along to the next thing. This is going to be a fast meeting, everybody. Okay, the next item up is learning. And this is Special Instructional Programs and Accommodations Policy, second reading. And who's going to do that? Patrick? Mr. Larkin?
I think you have the backup from last time and it was reviewed at the previous meeting. So I think we're just looking for...
We just talked about should we put in the child find. Should that be in there or not?
I don't have that information in front of me in regards to child finds, so I apologize. I don't have that answer.
Ms. Simon?
Yeah, I had a, I did have some questions last time, but in retrospect, I feel like this is something that has been, it was created not by us sitting down deciding what to put in it, but it was created by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and they have a pretty broad view of what's needed. So, you know, and given that it may not specify child find, but it does say that we recognize the needs, that when appropriate services are not available, they'll provide them. You know, that we will follow all the laws and regulations. You'll hear, I'm going to read this part for people who don't have it in front of them. "The requirements of law and regulation will be followed in the identification of children with special needs, in referrals for their evaluation, in prescribing for them suitable programs, and in assessing their educational progress in keeping with state requirements. And then, students between the ages of 3 and 22 who have not attained a high school diploma or its equivalent will be eligible for special education." And I feel that does cover it. So I would be prepared to vote on this tonight. It is our second reading, and I'd be prepared. I'd like to make a motion to approve this file, IHB, Special Instructional Programs and Accommodations as was sent to us in our packet. That's my motion.
You second it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So it's moved and seconded. So I, so we would like to approve and vote on that this is recommended that the school committee vote to approve this as it is written. Can we take a vote, please?
Can I ask a question?
And I'd like to make a comment later, after Beth.
Oh, sorry.
After Ms...
Mr. Foss, go ahead and make your comment.
No, no, Beth can go first, that's fine.
Okay. Yes, is that Beth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Beth Culver with the CPAC. Last time, the first reading, I did ask some questions about the implementation of the policy. And you guys kind of made it clear that you were just following the district's policy in terms of implementation. So I was wondering if the district's policy could be included in the school committee's policy and if additionally, at a future time, we could discuss the district's policy as some members have expressed concerns that perhaps our procedures are not in the spirit of the regulations.
Beth, I'm not sure I know exactly what you're referring to, but it sounds to me like perhaps procedures. The district procedures are what you are discussing. And it's our job as the school committee to establish the policies. And I think that this policy covers all of it. So if our procedures are problematic, then we should be, you know, you should be continuing, our district should be continuing to look at these with our special ed director, with the superintendent, and all the people involved. And if we need to change the procedures, that would be something it sounds like needs to be looked at from what you're saying. But I don't think that it needs to be in this policy. I've come up across that a couple of times in my seven years on the school committee where I was proposing policies and procedures altogether, and it is not really the best practice because we can change our procedures. But I do believe, unless you had a concern about what this policy is suggesting that you think we shouldn't support, I would still want to support this, but encourage Ms. Chicalini and you and all the people involved to continue to look at our procedures to see where they may not be meeting the goals of this policy or the intent of the special education regulations and laws.
I hear what you're saying. I think as a CPAC, we might need some support from the school committee in reaching a collaborative place in these types of meetings with discussing procedure.
Okay. Thank you, Beth. Ms. Martha?
Beth, how about if we link the procedures to the policy on the webpage? And the procedures can be a topic of discussion with CPAC.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foss, you had a comment?
Just, we spoke about child find earlier, just a couple minutes ago, and that is on the website, just as a note. I think two weeks ago when we got this policy for the first reading, I asked a question along the lines, is this going to actually change any of the practice of the district? And, correct me if I'm wrong, but the answer was no. It's this, these are things we already take care of. It's, we're not changing anything. So is it that we're just adopting this policy? I guess for what reason are we adopting this policy? If we already do all these things?
Ms. Monica?
Kyle, I had been talking to a parent, and she asked me for the policy. And so when I looked for it, the policy didn't exist. The procedures existed, and the practice existed, but the policy itself had never been actually pulled in from the Mass Association of School Committees. So Eric went searching for one, and it seems that most districts don't actually have a written policy, or at least the ones that he looked at. So he went directly to Mass Association of School Committees and asked them for a policy that covered child find, among other things. And he thought, since he had found the correct policy, we should adopt it because it's the right thing to do. I think the original question that caused all of this had to do with finding the kids that need services. And I've looked into that quite a bit since this started. And there is a procedure whereby the schools are in contact with early intervention, pediatricians, you know, of the three-year-olds that are coming along, and daycares. And the thing that I think is most important that I want to publicize by saying it is that any parent who wants their three-year-old child screened, that is available. All they have to do is ask. You have a three-year-old, and you want to be sure that your child screens as would be expected, go ahead and ask. It's open to everyone. So the policy is really just the umbrella over the whole thing to make sure that we have all our bases covered. And the procedures can actually be changed. If someone points out something we're missing or a source that we're missing, we can change the procedure to facilitate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Simon?
This is not directly related to the vote, but in terms of policies, when you look on the school department website, there are some, but there are gaps, and some of them are very, very old. And I've been working on this for seven years to try to update our policies. And this is an example of one where there was a gap. And now this is to fill in. And I'm delighted to say that in the budget for next year, there is funding for us to be working with somebody from MASC to streamline, not streamline, update our policies and make sure that we have the policies that we need. So I'm going to request that the next chair appoint me to that committee to be working on those policies after. I don't expect anything to happen before the election, but I am ready to start. I, you know, I was working on it by myself. Mrs. Monica was helping me and Dr. Conti, and it was taking us a lot of time. We weren't getting very far. And I think having somebody who can facilitate that process, who knows about it, will make it happen. And it needs to happen. It's very, a lot of our policies are out of date, so we need to be doing this. And this is just one piece that was noticed that has to be put in place. And again, to reassure people, the wording of the second paragraph starts, "The requirements of law and regulation will be followed in the identification of children with special needs." So again, if we're not doing it, we need to fix that. But we need a policy that, we would like to have a policy that makes it clear that that is our intention. And if we're not meeting it, we need to figure out what our glows and grows are. You know, we need to know how do we need to improve so we can make sure we are identifying all the students that we need.
Thank you, Ms. Simon.
Through the chair, if I could, just, I mean, hopefully not to add more confusion to this, but just to be clear, we've gone through multiple comprehensive program reviews by the Department of Education, which check our procedures that deal with special education, ELL, civil rights. And we've made modifications. They don't read school committee policy. They look at our procedures and make sure we're following the law when it comes to special education. So I want to be, just reiterate what was said earlier. We are following the laws of Massachusetts, and this policy was something that was absent from our policy manual. And again, that's not saying that we're not open to future discussions around procedures where there's points of question or confusion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. So at this point, the Special Instructional Programs and Accommodations Policy has been moved and seconded. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. The next item on the agenda is the draft school calendar, 2022-2023, first reading. Mr. Larkin?
Mr. Porch and I, we did have a conversation with our joint bargaining team today, and the calendar was on that agenda as well. So I know this is a first reading, and there'll be questions. And we got some feedback from the teachers as well, which we appreciate. I don't have a lot of comments. I know one thing that they did note was for the spring conference, parent conference for, I don't believe it's on here, for elementary schools. They were suggesting the 16th of March for elementary parent conferences because, again, to our teachers' credit, it's pre-Rahmadan. We don't want to impact any of the families celebrating Ramadan negatively with parent conferences. So, and we are, one thing I know we're very conscious of is other cultural observances. So one of the reasons I do appreciate the timeframe between the first and second reading is just to make sure we all have a chance to double-check those cultural observances to make sure there's no conflicts. But beyond that, we're happy to answer questions. We did tell the teachers that, you know, this would be discussed tonight, and we'd have some good information to bring back before we do a final reading of this.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. Anybody have, Ms. Simon?
Were there other suggestions from the teachers other than the March 16 date?
Again, my recollection is that was the main question. We did, Mr. Porch and I did also elevate, you know, not to get into the weeds on this, but for, for next year, I know timing's an issue for the, for the calendar, as it always is, but we'd really love to see opportunities for, for more parent voice in some of the decision-making with the school calendar about whether, I don't know what our PD day structure will look like, but to get input, like, what's the impact of them on two days in March? Or if we're going to have, you know, if we're only going to have a couple of full-day PDs, it would be great to get some parent feedback into, if there's a preference for them on where that would, where that would best fit their needs. And the same thing goes with parent conferences. We elevated the conversation about, well, have we talked about what's the purpose of parent conferences? Because I can tell you, as a former high school principal, we always used to have them right after report cards for the first term or, but now the grading system is different where people are in the loop about grades well before, you know, the report cards are printed. So just those conversations, I think, would be a good focal point for next year, for school councils to take on. We have more of an active LPAC, and just really to reach out and get some community feedback on what's best for the families for some of this, as well as the teachers.
So I have another comment. Mrs. Bond, if I may?
Yes. So, I have a concern. I raised this a year ago, that the professional development days are bunched, and we have months where we don't have them. And we heard tonight from one of our teachers that they're not happy with the professional development schedule, that they'd like to have them more often. We've spent a lot of time in negotiations discussing the issue, having more regular, ongoing professional development that allows for best practice for professional development, which is a chance to discuss something, learn something, go back and try it out in your classroom, come back again, see how it went, get feedback. And there's a, there's an educational jargon-y term for that, but I think you know what I'm talking about. And, and when I see that we're again going to bunch these PDs, I, I know the teachers would like to see half-days, but we have six PD days, and I don't know why we couldn't use parts of those to address what the teachers are asking for. So, now you've met with the teachers, and I'm confused because in negotiations, the teachers are asking us to have ongoing, over the course of the year, periodic, regular professional development, which I completely support. So that makes me think that they would be asking for, instead of no PD in October and two, and I printed it out without color, so I don't remember now which month had two, but we have two in January and two in March, that those could be spread out. And so, I want to go with, you know, what the teachers would like. I'm not going to, I don't want to have my opinion override what, and it couldn't anyway, but I wouldn't want it to override what this group discussion is, this collaboration with the teachers. But I would appreciate it if you're going to have another conversation, if you could bring that up and ask them if there were, if that might be a positive thing. And if the Joint Labor Management Group says, yes, this is the way we want it, I will remove my objection. But I really, I really keep hearing from the teachers that they want something that I think we can do with our current schedule. You know, if we settle on a contract that has different options, that's great. But if we're going to, and I know calendars can be changed, but once we vote on it, the parents are going to, you know, parents start making plans and we all trying to think ahead. So I'd appreciate it if you would bring that back to your next conversation about the calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Anyone else have any comments?
Yes.
Mr. Porch?
So I, through the chair, I appreciate the comments from Ms. Simon. The, I think some of the challenge that, that we're working through as a school district around a professional learning, which myself and Mr. Larkin are managing for the most part, are, some of the dynamics are because of our contract situation. The distinction is time, right? So, the time component is somewhat of an immovable barrier right now because of, you know, the contract and like those days and these kinds of things. But I also think what we're trying to do is, to your point, be in collaboration about the purpose of professional learning in a, in a more coherent way. And I think historically here, from what I've learned in eight months, the way we've done professional learning is, is very different than the experiences that, like for me, that I've come from in a, in a bigger district like Boston. And so, what we want to try to do is work with our teachers and, and figure out the distinction between what, what's needed in terms of what they think is, is needed, because we do have some very strong best practices. Our teachers have some really strong best practices. But we have to also factor in all the layers that go with that. So like, we've had two years of COVID, remote learning. We've moved away from some of those best practices because of dynamics that, that no one could necessarily manage for. And now we have a really thorough equity statement that is also being factored in with this idea that we're having an audit. And so, so now we're, we're going to have some things in front of us that are going to be important for professional learning that we can't see right now because we have a process that's happening. So again, the distinction is time, right? So if we could nail down time, then I think it makes it a little bit different when we start talking about a calendar. I think it's hard to prioritize what's spread out and what's bunched together because then what we talk about in our admin meetings with school leaders is what's, what do we need to do in terms of professional learning? And that's, it's a harder process, right, with the contract piece still being a little bit, not quite solidified, if that makes sense. But it is, to your point, Ms. Simon, something that we will continue, we will bring back to the table and have a conversation about, without a doubt.
Thank you. Mr. Larkin?
Yeah, sorry. I just, and I, Principal Purchase, if I get this wrong, she was part of that call today, too. I think there was some questioning about the November 7th for the elementary parent-teacher conferences from some of the elementary members on the call today, whether that was a little early for them. So that was a question that we have to, we'll get back to you on.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. Anyone else have any other questions or comments? Ms. Monica?
I don't know what professional development is planned, but I agree with Martha to the, to the extent that if the Joint Labor Management Team wants it a certain way, I have no problem with what they agree on. I assume that these days are chosen in a joint manner somehow. I don't think Dr. Conti, you know, throws dots at a calendar and picks the days that way. When I look at the blocks, the time blocks, I wonder if perhaps there are some staff development programs that take two days or that some of the teachers have the first day and, you know, they swap off or, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I have no idea what, what's planned. But I'm just trying to find logic to having two days together. And I'm sure there is some logic to it. I just don't know what it is. But as long as it's all worked out and both sides agree to a calendar, then I'm sure we won't have any, any problem with it.
And one more thing through the chair. We did ask specifically about the March date, and we heard that's the way we've always done it. We don't have a problem with it from the people on the call today. So, I know there's different perspectives, just like we all have different perspectives on some things, but we will reiterate to Mr. Murphy, who's on the call with us, that, Mr. Patrick Murphy from the BEA, that we're flexible on the dates.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you. So now we are going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is out-of-state travel for BHS DECA. And I'm just going to read the little background statement on this. Principal Mark Sullivan is requesting that the BHS DECA students be allowed to travel out-of-state to Atlanta for the national competition. They will be traveling by plane. There are 25 students that will attend this competition. Three chaperones, high school teachers, will accompany the students. They are traveling from April 22nd through April 27th, 2022. There is no cost to the students. The cost of the trip will be absorbed through the student activity account and contracted services. Anybody have any questions or comments or anything they want to state? Okay. So it is recommended that the school committee approve the out-of-state travel to Atlanta for BHS DECA students for the national competition from April 22nd through April 27th, 2022. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
You didn't ask.
I'm aye. Sorry. Discussion, sorry.
Discussion first.
Any discussion?
There probably wasn't any, right?
I already asked a few questions earlier. That's why I didn't ask that question.
Only to ask Mr. Sullivan if he needs another chaperone.
No kidding.
You volunteering?
Yes, I am.
I think they would make it, Mr. Post, if you wanted to go. Like, just one clarification. There is a cost to students. It's offset through our contracted services and student activity account. But there still is a, it reduces the cost for students to participate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so let's start this again. No more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor. So it's unanimous. It's a favor.
Through the chair, one more comment on that. I'm sorry if it's repetitive, but it's worth repeating. I know it was in the update that Dr. Conti sends to all of you, but, and Mr. Sullivan can chime in if I'm, if I'm missing anything. But I think this is a record number of students going on to the international competition, 25. So again, kudos to Mrs. Truvey and Mrs. Anderson and everybody that worked with these students.
That's great.
Thank you for letting us know. Thank you, Mr. Larkin. All right. So the next item on the agenda is equity. Let's talk about it. Mr. Porch?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We had our, our most recent session of let's talk about it. I'm not sure what our numbers were. I think with 30-ish, yeah, 30-ish. And we had some, some guests that, that were added to the, to the roster of updates around the district, which we thought was phenomenal. We had some parent engagement from the LPAC. We had CPAC present and give an overview and an update on the front end, which was very cool. And then we had a very, a very good discussion, which, which followed. So, went really well. And the update on the, the next session will be out shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Porch. Anyone have any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Sorry, I missed it.
Me, too. All right. The next item on the agenda is the equity audit update. Is that, who, Mr. Larkin or Mr. Porch? Do it together.
So, the, the equity audit is underway, and it is a, what I would call a spiraling process. But what we have happening and have in the midst of right now is, the firm has been meeting with school leaders across our district while also in concert having two-and-a-half-hour PD sessions with district leadership folks, directors here in central office. And it's been really a lot for us in terms of just the, the learning that's happening and the, the school leaders and, you know, welcoming and, you know, the firm to observe and have conversations with leadership. All that we've been hearing so far has been really positive that folks are embracing this process. And it's been really good so far. We had one town hall. We will have another coming up here very shortly. We connect with the firm on Thursday this week, on Friday this week, sorry. And we'll finalize some dates and get those out in the next week or so for the next town hall, for folks to come and get clarification on process and kind of where we are and what we're doing. And that'll continue throughout this, this process into the, into the fall of next school year. So, so far, so good.
Thank you, Mr. Porch. Mr. Larkin, anything you want to add?
No, that was a great overview. I just want to remind people, even though this is Mr. Porch's first year in the district, and we're fortunate to have him, that the equity audit is something that's been in our district plan for many years or a few years, many maybe too, too much. But it's for a few years. So just, I just want to remind people of that, and that we appreciate his help in facilitating equity audits. So I just want to reference that for people who don't know the, the timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. Okay. Ms. Bond? No anymore? I don't like any more comments, questions.
So, I, you know, I, I'm not in the workings of it, and obviously there's a lot of things going on with the equity audit. And I'm just, I'm a little bit interested in sort of what you've described today, that they're meeting with leadership teams, that they're, you know, but I, I don't need a list tonight, but I'm interested more of what they're doing. And in particular, I, I'm wondering if you have shared with them, and I'm sort of assuming the answer is yes, but I want to raise this, that, you know, there's been a lot of DEI work in the district in the last number of years. And even to the point where, last summer, we hired Mr. Porch. So the summer before that, the District Equity Committee, which was made up of teachers and students and administrators and a couple of school committee members, had put together an equity, a draft equity action plan. And actually, Ms. Purchase, who's here tonight, was part of, and Ms. Chan-Fine, they helped put together a draft. So, yeah, are you going to?
They, they were really like the primary workers on that, just to be fully transparent. I want to thank them for that. Not that you're trying to gloss over that, but just for factual information.
Yeah, actually, yes. Ms. Chan-Fine and Ms. Purchase put together a draft action plan that came out of some of the work that had been done in the district. And I'm interested, for example, if you folks have that draft plan, and I think you do, and if you've shared that with, is it Black Print? Is that the name of the company, the consulting firm? And, and if they've had a chance to see what ton of work we had been doing. We had subcommittees that had worked on various aspects of that. And so, in terms of an audit looking at all the things that are going on, many of those things kind of stopped when we, we moved ahead with another approach. But I, I would hope that the work that was done would at least be looked at, even if it isn't the way we're going to go. But I just, I want to raise that, and I see you're shaking your head. But I'd be interested in the other things, maybe in your next report at the next meeting, what other things are they looking at, doing, you know, what kind of data are they looking at and that kind of stuff?
So I'll, I'll manage some of this now. So a couple of things. I think the town hall sessions are about some of what you're referring to. And, and just to go back a step, the process for securing a firm is inclusive of the work that's been done. So, just, just for your own context, when we put the bids out for securing a firm, that is part of the pretext that folks who are applying to be the firm to service this district have to consider is the work that we've done. And so that, that is, that's already fundamentally built into the process holistically. So, and, and I guess I would be remiss if I didn't say this as well. Some of the, the primary purpose of an audit is to examine what a district is doing, right? It is, it is not necessarily for the purposes of implementing an existing strategy. And so I, I want to be clear, like, we don't blur terms. It's easy in these settings to do that. I think what you're trying to say is that you, you are interested in seeing where there are parallels and intersections between what was done and what we find through the investigation. I think that's what you're trying to say. Because then, again, an audit is an investigation into what your district is doing, not implementation of, of an action plan. So I just want to be clear about what the, what the function of an audit is.
And, and I actually would like to clarify through the chair. I don't think that's what I was asking, so I'll, I'll try to say it a different way. I totally did not expect an audit to come in and implement something that we decided on before. What I'm, I'm just wanting to be sure is that the audit, when it looks at what we are doing and have done in the past, that they look at that work. That's all. That's what I was talking about. I, I don't expect them to say, do everything you were doing before.
So again, that's what the town halls are for? The town halls are for, are actually a more authentic way of doing that, rather than looking at something that was done six months ago, eight months ago, nine months ago, based on something that happened, an event per se. Those town halls are more functional. The conversations are more functional because it's based on real time, what, what folks think are important elements to look at and pay attention to. So, those spaces are also a place to collect data. Ultimately, the, the investigation will conclude with having a clear understanding of what we've done factually in, in data outcomes. And the firm will support us looking at what we, what our desired action plan is going forward. And so that's when we would look more at that formal tasks of the things that were done before. And then, think about the resources that we need to move those gap areas or, or build upon the existing strength areas to, to neutralize some of the gap areas. So that, that's all technical. But suffice it to say, those, those pieces unfold as you go through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Porch. Ms. Monica?
I have kind of a more down-to-earth question. A lot of parents have mentioned to me in one form or another that they go out of to me in one form or another that they got a permission slip about having their child pulled out for I don't know what, you know, and that's what they wanted to know. Like, some people were like, oh, yeah, whatever, I don't care. And other people were like, well, I want to know what it is. I mean, what are they doing? Are they getting asked questions? Or, you know, what happens when they get pulled out? So I think there are people who would just like to have an idea.
Sure. It's a great question. Thank you, Ms. Monaco. It's a consent form that parents received. And it's essentially just to speak with students about their experiences in class, not any, about any specific teacher, any particular topic, but their experiences in school, what they're struggling with, areas where they would like to see change. Similar questions that anybody would be asked, you know, in the district. The consent forms are a part of the process that you do, you request permission. And it's not a requirement. Students could opt out. Parents could say no. It's really to capture the entire voice of our district, including our students. The questions are not questions that are distinct, like I said, to specific teachers or specific content, but just about their general experiences, you know, in school. So that's what those consent forms are for. Hopefully that answers the question.
So is it in a group session?
Yes. So there are groups of students that they come together, kind of like this size, or a little bit bigger, maybe. And they all, you know, get to field the same questions asked or answer if they choose, if they're comfortable. But they're not in isolation, having a conversation. No.
All right, thanks.
Sure thing.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or anything to add? All right. So now that Mr. Murphy is here, I will happily hand the chair position back over to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I apologize for being late. It appears that that was item 6B. So moving on to item 7, Culture, Relationship, and Thriving COVID Update. Mr. Larkin?
Thank you. We're just, again, not a lot to report. Happy to answer questions if there's more info needed. But we've been kind of reporting on cases in the weekly update. Last week, we had 10 cases, which was down from 14 the week before. I just checked the spreadsheet, you know, it's two days in. We're at one this week. I know there was a neighboring community that had a little bit of a situation where they had to close their sixth grade. I think it was Concord, but I could be wrong. I know there's concerns about a variant, you know, but we'll just continue to update families. I know back a few weeks ago, we had multiple cases in one classroom, more than one. And we notified, you know, the parents, what was happening in that classroom, and recommended you might want to have your child wear a mask. Again, not mandatory, just because we were seeing multiple cases within that same room. So we'll continue to try to be vigilant in that way if we see, like, multiple cases in the same classroom. Our nurses are awesome about letting us know when these things are happening. So again, continued shout-out to them for keeping us up to date on where these things are happening. And so nothing really new. We'll knock on wood, as we move further into the spring, that this trend continues.
No news is good news, as I say. Any questions or comments on the COVID report? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 8, Facilities and Finance.
If I could, through the chair, I know Dr. Conti's not here. He would usually recommend that we shuffle things to let the people that are present here in the room, who can hopefully get home sooner, could go first.
Absolutely.
That would be Larry Cohen.
I don't think so.
Well, that's the budget.
One other aside, while the middle schools here are doing their budgetary overview, we did have a warrant article going back a little ways about some social studies instructional materials that I wanted to give you an update on while they're here, so they wouldn't have to come back on another night.
Good evening. How are you? Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. It's nice to be here among people. So thank you for the opportunity to come in and talk a little bit about an update, again, a warrant article that was approved, I think, in the spring of 2019. And so we have a, my, push in, okay. So we had shared a, kind of a presentation with Mr. Kuna, and he's gonna, we'd just like to give you kind of an update on where we are in terms of identifying curriculum resources and implementing. I also want to, along with me, Mrs. Jennifer Chen-Fine and Mr. Murphy, Mrs. Virginia Volpe, who's our Social Studies Program Coordinator, is joining us remotely as well. So she's been integral in kind of moving this work forward. So why the new social studies curriculum frameworks? Why did we request that? Why have we been working hard for the last two years? In 2018, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education passed a new social studies curriculum frameworks. And there was a shift in not only the content. So historically, sixth grade would teach geography and culture, and then seventh and eighth grade kind of shared the world history piece. The new curriculum frameworks shifted that and combined world history and geography and split it over sixth and seventh grade, and then really focused on government and civics in eighth grade. And when I say government, really the foundation of the United States government. In addition to the shift from content, there was also a shift to include practice and literacy standards. So really going to not just the what we were learning about, but also the how we were learning about, and moving more towards an inquiry-based process. So that is, you know, the reason why. The textbooks that were in place prior to this were Glencoe, from the Glencoe Publishing Company, and they were published in 2002, which was aligned with when the, kind of the last rendering of the frameworks, which were in the early 2000s and the late 1990s. So again, through the support of the town, which we're very grateful for, we had the, you know, we received the approval on the warrant. And then we engaged in a collaborative process with teachers, and they have identified McGraw-Hill as the resource of choice. So that is something that we are excited to kind of go through and quite proud of the process. And I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Chen-Fine, but I just want to give a shout-out both to Mrs. Volpe and all of the teachers for all of their hard work, because piloting new resources is never easy, and to do it during a pandemic is daunting. So we just want to really, you know, thank them for their due diligence to this process. Thanks, Ms. Purchase. Perfect. So just to take everyone through a little bit of the process of how we came to this recommendation and decision. And so this was done in collaboration with our nine social studies teachers at our school over three years, us as administrators, and several BPS administrators, including Ray Porch and Mr. Larkin, who are sitting right here, Carrie Lamprey, representing our L students, Christina Chicalini, Sean Muslman for K-5 Social Studies, and Todd Witten at the High School for Social Studies. So looking back three years ago is when, you know, 2018 is when the frameworks were released by DESI. In the 2019 and '20 school year, we were talking about the pilot process. We were in conversation with, especially Virginia Volpe did a lot of legwork in talking to vendors of thinking about what options there might be. And unfortunately, the pandemic kind of put a halt in that, but that's okay. By the beginning of the next school year, we were ready to, we had chosen three different resources, Houghton Mifflin, Savas, which was previously known as Pearson, and Discovery Ed, they have a tech book. And so we had decided that our sixth and our eighth grade teachers were going to pilot each of those resources for at least one unit of the year. And just for some context, there's usually about eight, seven to nine units in a school year. And so I think just a quick summary, you know, seventh grade teachers also were part of the process, but not immediately piloting everything, just because the sixth grade standards are half of it, and the seventh grader are the other half. And so the previous seventh graders had not seen the new standards yet. And so that was an intentional decision to roll up. Just briefly, I think, some things that came out, Houghton Mifflin and Savas were both textbook-based resources. They had online resources, but I think the big takeaway from both of those were that the textbooks in any one grade level were kind of split across two textbooks. So a sixth grader would have to have had, you know, both a geography and a history textbook. And that's true for Savas as well. And part of it is that because they weren't 100% aligned to Massachusetts standards, they were more aligned to some standards that are known more nationally. And then Discovery was really great, but it was completely digital. And for our teachers coming from a fully print textbook, they felt it was really important for them, and also for learners who really needed that print resource, that there was something in print. I think, so, you know, by the end of last school year, after professional development with all three resources, and going through that pilot process, having surveys both for teachers and for students, we were unable to come to a consensus of what resource we would like to adopt. And so rather than make a decision that would be very costly, we decided, you know what, let's give it one more year. Discovery Ed was the kind of top choice out of that. And so moving into this school year, we found out that McGraw-Hill had actually not been out there as an option last school year, because they had taken the time to think more intentionally about how to write for the Massachusetts standards. And so, you know, we were finding out at the time that there were districts, many districts in Massachusetts, some of them including Wilmington, Dedham, Brookline, Tewksbury, Medway, and there are several more links later in this, if people want to look at it, that had already adopted McGraw-Hill. And so we decided this school year to kind of pilot McGraw-Hill with continued access to Discovery Ed, so that there could be a comparison. I think just in the interest of time, we'll move forward to, the next few slides show some results of the teacher surveys. The student surveys are, there's information in there, but I'm not going to go through all of them. So, you know, there were, it was a very comprehensive survey that teachers answered. And so we're not going to give every single question, but I did want to go through a few samples. So, Bob, if you want to go back to the sample student learning question, so the question that teachers were asked, or the statement, and they were asked to either strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree with the statement, is, "This resource is aligned to the learning expectations presented in the Massachusetts Content Standards for each grade level." And so if you notice, with McGraw-Hill, we had 80% of our students strongly agree and 20% agree. So 100% of our teachers agreed that McGraw-Hill was aligned to standards, whereas, you know, that was not true for Discovery Ed. There was 12.5% of teachers who strongly disagreed that it was aligned. You know, just some details about the McGraw-Hill in particular, there's a chapter opener that kind of begins with essential questions, which is aligned with the practice standards in terms of asking students, you know, what is essential in our learning in this unit as we dive in. There's an inquiry journal that allows for deeper thinking and allows students, their inquiry process to guide their learning, rather than, you know, more just, here are the dates and let us memorize them. On the online resource, you know, there's the textbook that students would have in physical form, but on the online piece, there's also, right next to the text, there's a video format that gives students access to different primary and secondary resources. And then the other thing that was important in terms of the learning is that there's this weekly updated current event sections called BTW, which stands for "by the way." A sample equity question, and there were several asked, was, "There are provisions for adapting instructional activities to accommodate English learners." And so, you know, again, I'll point to the McGraw-Hill, 100% of our teachers either agreed or strongly agreed with that statement, whereas only 75% of teachers agreed for Discovery Education. In particular, there's a few, so the online piece of it is linked to Google Translate, and so you can translate anything on their website into any language. And then in addition, McGraw-Hill has spent time translating all of their student worksheets, which are in English, into Spanish. So there is English and Spanish for that. And then I want to talk a little bit about what some of the access for all students who have different needs, whether it's Ls or students who have IEPs or have 504s. So there is an option to listen to the text through audio form. You can also change the font size. There's three sizes. You can change the level of reading to either be on grade level for reading, or you can quickly toggle it to be approaching grade level, which is one to two grade levels below. All of the videos do have closed captioning for students who might need to read and see that. There is something that Carrie Lamprey was really excited about, was that in addition to all of these, the text and the videos, that sometimes there are these graphic novel-type resources where students who really are still learning English are able to kind of get the content through the images of graphic novels, which are very engaging for middle school students, and rather than a text-heavy, always having a text-heavy resource. The other things I'll mention is that there is the option to do text-to-speech, which is kind of the auditory piece, and that there are reading and writing organizers that are already there, so that teachers can just use them already aligned to the text to support student learning. Very quickly, just showing a sample literacy question, which, that's fine, it's pretty similar, and then a longevity question, which, a literacy question. So briefly, again, you can see that 100% of teachers think that this resource, McGraw-Hill, does provide a variety of ways for students to build and enhance their Massachusetts grade-level literacy standards, which was not as true for Discovery Ed. And then for longevity, because that was an important question, I'll point that Ms. Purchase had spoken to, the last time a book had been published that we had used for social studies was 2002, which you can imagine, you know, just politically, different countries have changed their political boundaries, and there have been many, many changes. And so in terms of longevity, because, you know, the BTW section is updated every single week with current events, I think, you know, last I saw in the civics in the eighth grade, there was very good documentation through Obama's presidency and the beginning of Trump's presidency. I am curious to see how often they're going to be updating that resource. But I think, you know, thinking about, we're purchasing this resource not just for the next few years, but hopefully for, you know, 10 years or more. And so as you can see, teachers, for the most part, thought that, I think, it was nine out of 10 teachers thought that, yes, this is a resource that we could see ourselves using for the next 10 years, which is not as true for Discovery Ed. This last slide here, I won't talk too much, but I did want to link these options, so that you can kind of see a correlation between what the Massachusetts standards are for each grade in middle school, and the correlation to those texts for McGraw-Hill. There's a link for the districts in Massachusetts that are currently using McGraw-Hill for social studies, as well as just sample materials, if you want, if parents or family members want to see, what does a sample text look like. I picked two, Mesopotamia Empire, which is, you know, recently was studied in sixth grade, and then Principles of the Constitution, which was done earlier this year in eighth grade. I think, you know, before we, we don't have any more slides, but we do want to, if there are any questions out there, I know that Ms. Purchase and I are both happy to answer them, and Ms. Volpe, who's our eighth grade Curriculum Coordinator for Social Studies, is online and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Anybody?
I just want to say hello to Mrs. Volpe.
Mr. Chair, my name?
Hi, Virginia.
Are we going to get sent a copy of that slideshow? Because I teach seventh and eighth grade social studies. I'm very interested and impressed by the thoroughness. We happen to use a McGraw-Hill in the seventh grade class that I teach, or something else in eighth grade, but especially the student work. I think that, I would love to see that. And not that I'll compare with my own students, but I probably will a little bit. But thank you very much for the presentation. It looks great.
And we'll make sure, we were late getting it to central office, so we'll make sure that you get a copy of the presentation. You have access to it.
Thank you. Everything okay, Bob?
Yeah, I want to thank everyone who participated in this project. It was obviously a really big project and done well. And I appreciate all the thoughtfulness and the kinds of questions and the feedback you got from the teachers, and the process sounded good. So I'm really pleased to hear this. And thank you to Virginia and everyone else who did all this work. So thank you. I'm looking forward to having this get implemented, because it's been a while, and changing the standards makes a big deal. So thank you for doing it, and I hope it'll help, you know, the teachers.
Chris?
I just think you did a great job with your presentation. I'm glad to see that so many of the teachers many of the teachers support one program over another, so there's no question as to where to go.
All right. Thank you. Patrick?
No, I just, I think, as long as we're moving past the social studies while they were here, thank you for saving them another evening, but move on to the middle school budget portion.
Okay.
So we do not have slides, and we're not going to talk at length because there's quite a few budget presentations that are happening tonight. So we presented an operating budget that was a level funded budget, and certainly some of the line items were moved around depending on the needs. So for example, science is another area where we are in the process of implementing new frameworks and new curriculum resources. So some of those initial costs were offset by a grant and some professional learning that's happening, and there's going to need to be some continued support through the operating budget. So we are, if there are questions about the operating budget, I do, you know, I'm happy to answer them, but I think that it was pretty straightforward in terms of the bottom line, so.
Yeah, if you came in level funded, I think that's the best we could ask for. So certainly no complaints. But did anybody have any specific questions as to their budget or?
I actually did not have any flags that came up when I looked through it. I don't know all the details, but I did look through it, and I, you know, it looks like you, I'm glad you're able to come in with a 0%, including, you know, having some grant resources and that kind of thing. And I'm also wondering, there's budget for next year, is VOD bill some information? So is VOD bill on this year? Or is it something else? Does it have a different name?
So honestly, if it's there specifically, then I'm going to say that that was an error. I'll check and look. I do think that there is some talk of a talent show. So I've said from the beginning that there's no way that I can ever fill those shoes, and I will stand by that. But we are looking at, a couple of teachers approached me and said, can we bring back the talent show, which we had done in the spring of 2019? So we are looking forward to bringing that back.
So that's in process now for the spring?
Yes, so very, very beginning, I would say, look forward to it in towards the, you know, June.
I'm sure the kids will enjoy it. I know it takes extra work for everyone to do those kind of events, but the kids do have fun.
Yeah, and I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Stern, and Mrs. Barbara Stern, and Mrs. Carolyn Crowley, who did the talent show, you know, our first year, and then did a virtual talent show, which is, it sounds a lot easier than it is because in terms of editing video and doing things. So just to keep that alive during the pandemic was fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. So in addition to the, we do have asks. So in addition to the level funded budget, we did submit a few requests for additional staff, and just wanted to, you know, go through, some of them are in response to some of our changing needs in the building in terms of an additional ELL teacher. This year, we used a position kind of to support both the world language and an ELL position, and based on the number of students that we are receiving, and also the level of students in terms of their English proficiency, that their needs are more. So we are asking for a, excuse me, a ELL teacher. We are asking for an additional part-time reading teacher. Currently, our sixth grade students get a, we'll call it a double dip of reading, where they, you know, go for two out of six of their days in the rotation for a reading strategies class, so explicitly teaching reading comprehension skills, really bolstering the work that's happening in the ELA classrooms. And right now, Karen Gover, who's our reading specialist and our literacy coach, is teaching two of those sections, and that is reducing the opportunities that she has to provide tier two supports to students. So even though, you know, we do have, you know, some tier two reading classes in sixth grade, they're larger, they're not meeting as frequently as they could or otherwise. So that's something that this part-time reading teacher would continue to provide, the reading strategies class to all students, and then, you know, to have our expert in reading available to provide additional support to our students and to our teachers around some of the literacy pieces. The other need, and we've talked, and we've heard a lot about the needs of students in the post-pandemic world, and the other need that we are experiencing and seeing is really a need in our counseling department. I think that this is aligned, and I want to make sure again that I'm just really acknowledging the hard work of our school counselors now. In addition to kind of their, you know, regular responsibilities, helping with scheduling, being the 504 liaisons in terms of numbering, you know, having those meetings and writing 504s, we have asked them to do more in different, Mrs. Concepcion has been a wonderful resource and has really worked closely with our middle school staff. So our guidance counselors now go in, I believe it's three or four times a year, and they're providing direct instruction, tier one instruction around strategies for all students around social emotional skills. So that takes, in order to go through all of a grade level, that's, you know, three days, and then multiply by that. And not that it's three days, I'm saying that, I'm just saying in terms of the, you know, the tax on their time. And we're also looking at improving and extending our tier two programming for students, and providing, for students who are struggling, providing, again, with Mrs. Concepcion's guidance, you know, doing some groups in terms of building skills around anxiety and depression and other things. Which is another piece. I do believe it's the right thing to do to move to a more proactive approach to supporting students. And it does, you know, again, take away, not take away, just reallocate some of our needs. So not only are we seeing increased need from students, we're also trying to shift our practices to more of a multi-tiered system of support, where all kids are getting that direct instruction piece, and then the students that need it get the support that they need just in time. So in order to do that, and to, and to do it well, I do think we need additional support. I also think that when we look at, you know, some of the caseloads in terms of the comparison between kind of the high school and the middle school, that there's an opportunity to provide some additional support, and this person, you know, potentially could alleviate some of that. So the other position is, we had a retirement a year ago, and in our world language department, and which, we, again, we creatively filled this year. We had some challenges with hiring specific for the language, and we're still in conversations about what that looks like going forward. But the number of students that are taking Spanish is a high number, and our class sizes are a little high, and our sections are a little high. So an additional world language teacher would help alleviate some of that, and would support something that our world language teachers are advocating for, which is moving back to an exploratory program in sixth grade, where students had the opportunity to sample all the languages that we're offering. And so that would, which we have a way to do it, but we would just need that additional support and then still be able to kind of meet the expectations in the contract in terms of sections and otherwise. And finally, in addition to that, is if we continue, and again, we're, I know that there's been conversation and communication around the schedule review process at the middle school, and we're looking at doing some visioning and kind of where we want to go. And one of those questions will look at world language, and specifically the languages that we're offering. And this year, we were not able to hire an Italian teacher that was certified and qualified and was able to do that. We have a teacher who's teaching our eighth graders who had been studying Italian for the last two years, so our eighth graders are still having that experience. And if we add Italian back in, or, you know, make the decision that we do want to go forward with it, we will need an FTE, you know, a part of an FTE, not a full FTE, because we would be looking at potentially sixth grade, and then rolling that up to seventh grade so that there would be an increase over the next three years. Now my big ask, the final, and then I'll stop, is that we've talked a lot about the different needs of students, whether that is their learning needs, whether it's the need to incorporate different instructional practices, to extend, even just with social studies, we talked about literacy standards and practice standards and inquiry-based learning. And I wanted to first say that our program coordinators, and Mrs. Volpe is here, have done amazing work with very, with a structure and a system that doesn't necessarily provide them the time or the support to do that work. And when I say that is we do not have traditional department heads at the element, or, excuse me, at the middle school level, and we currently do not have instructional coaches or any kind of curriculum coach in that role. And so I want to be very clear and really, you know, just commend our program coordinators for implementing new standards and teaching a full caseload, and, you know, kind of communicating with their colleagues and supporting them. So this is not something that I'm asking for instead of, and I want to be very clear about that. And we keep asking teachers to do more and more, and support a wider range of students in the classroom. And I would like to offer them support through instructional coaches. And that is a model that is used widely, and it's really about providing teachers in, we talk about professional learning, so it's kind of in time, real-time professional learning. It's embedded, it's ongoing. There are opportunities to use the data that we have that's available to us to then adjust our practices. Instructional coaches would be available to model for teachers, help them problem solve. It's a need, I think, that at the middle school level. And again, when we look at the level of support that exists kind of at the elementary level with curriculum coaches, and then at the high school through department heads, it's a need that exists at the middle school. So I know there's a lot of difficult conversations, and I know this is the beginning of those presentations, but I just wanted to really advocate for that, thank our curriculum coordinators who are doing really a second full-time job a lot of times, and just, you know, in order to keep moving the middle school forward and to meet the instructor or the learning needs of students, I do think that this is an integral role. So thank you.
Thank you. Before asking for a response, Bob, did you have something?
Through the chair, if I could, first I'd like to apologize to Carrie Purchase and the middle school, also to the WebEx viewers. I was notified that there was a glitch where the video had froze about four minutes ago, and then we lost audio for less than a minute. So there was audio when the video froze, and we lost audio. We're back up and running, and the last three and a half minutes or so, we have all of your audio. So there is maybe less than a minute where some WebEx viewers did not get all of your audio. Everyone here and everybody on PCAT did. We're up and running now.
So do you want me to start over, or do we want to wait for questions if they come up from WebEx viewers?
I wanted you to be aware through the chair that when you made your first request for a new position, it was not intentional that the audio was cut out.
I appreciate that. No worries.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments for the middle school?
It all sounds good to me.
I'm wondering if we should ask the question that Mr. Nelson used to ask, is there anything else that you need?
Well, I think that's what they're...
I think we heard it, but there probably are other things, just so we know.
There's always more. I do think that this is, this year represents the most that our leadership team at the middle school has brought forward, and I think that that is both a response to where we're at in terms of that. And I also think that at this point, three-plus years in, that I have an understanding of what the needs are. So we have been, excuse me, I think, very conservative with our requests, so I'm sure I could ask for more. If you want to throw two counselors our way, they will have plenty of work. But I also know that it is a challenging time, and that there are needs across the district as well. So again, I really, I really feel that there is an opportunity here to provide some additional support to our teachers and to our students that replicate the supports that exist in other buildings in the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say the same, say to all the various elementary people who were in last week. With a similar list of asks, and everybody seems to have, counseling seems to be a big component of it, no matter what level we're talking to with everything that's gone on the last couple of years. But the same way, we give you guidelines, we're given guidelines by the town, so our problem is always turning a stuff, 10 pounds of stuff into a five-pound bag. And so I think we all took good notes of the things that you asked for, and every single one of them seemed like a reasonable and important request. And if I could sit here and say we'll give you all of them, I wish I could, but I can't. But it's a balancing test like it is every year. And, you know, we appreciate everything that you folks have been doing down there, given the, all the challenges we've had over these last couple of years, and we'd like to try to make it easier for you to the degree that we can. So that's something we're going to have to work our way through. I think the high school is also coming in tonight to discuss their budget. And then sometime over the next few weeks, we're going to have to finalize our budget and come up with a bottom line that comes within the town's guidelines that we were given, and still tries to meet our needs as best we can. So it's a delicate balance, it's a balancing test.
And I don't want your job, so good luck with that. I am going to just continue to advocate for the middle school and really ask that, when it comes down to those tough decisions, to really look at the kind of the supports that are already in place and the ratios that exist, and just consider that. I know I'm not getting everything on this list, I understand that. But again, I would just ask that we really look at what the, you know, kind of some of those numbers and needs are. So thank you.
And it's important for us to hear that, too, so I'm glad you brought it up tonight.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for the middle school administration? Thanks, folks, for coming out.
Thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Sullivan, who's here remotely, who graciously let us go first so that we could drive home. So thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
That's a fake smile on his face right now.
There's no water in his glass either. That's the whole community preservation thing.
All right. Mark, are you, are you guys ready? Is that a yes?
Yeah, the audio's going in and out again.
Hey, Nicole, we good? High school? Okay. Mark, I'm going to turn it over to you if you have any specific budget-related presentations, questions, requests, out of the time.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Like the middle school, we have a level, no, I'm not muted. Can you hear me?
Well, I need to do one for a class.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're on now.
You're on.
Great. So thank you, Mr. Murphy. Like the middle school, the high school, for our operating budget is level funded from last year. Similar to Mrs. Purchase, we do have some staff that we're looking to add, and as she mentioned, where not everything is able to be put in, but just advocating for some of the needs of the high school. A couple of the positions we're asking for are previous positions that we've had at Fairlawn High School that have gone unfilled over the last couple of years. So I'll just start with those. We are looking to, as we have the last couple of years, to add them, add them back in. One is, and I see Mr. Jacklin here, too, he can certainly feel free to add anything I might miss. One is a health teacher at the high school, specifically to teach our ninth grade health curriculum. The ninth grade class is, wasn't to go when we ran it for students acclimating to the high school, emphasizing good citizenship, working with the counseling department on the transition process to the high school, addressing peer issues such as bullying, in other social situations that kids might get into. They discussed the role of social influence that it has on their behavior. get into. They discuss the role of social influence that it has on their behavior. They also do things associated with the American Red Cross, learn about CPR, and other first aid techniques. So it's a really well-rounded curriculum for them transitioning to the high school, and we're looking to add that position back in. The other one is special education teacher at the high school, and that's just for the continuum of services and programming that's needed at the high school, continuing to deliver quality services that meet the educational programs of students on IEPs. This position, we actually lost in the 15, 16 school year, so again, we're looking to add that back in. Also, a speech-language pathology assistant. This would be the expansion of a language-based program in ASD programming that we have at the high school. The role of the SLP is becoming more critical for assessment, intervention, and consultations with other teachers. The assistant would allow our current speech-language pathologists to work more directly with students for both direct and indirect services, and also provide continuity in programming and services. Another position we're looking to add is a full-time computer science teacher at the high school. Currently, we have a .6, 1.6 teacher for computer science, but we run upwards of 10 sections every year in the computer science department. Those are offset by math teachers, teachers from the math department that teach the offset for the computer science classes. That obviously pulls from our math programming. So we'd like to see the full-time computer science teacher in, would give us the math sections back, and also let us, allow us to expand the computer science offerings, which have become popular, and is growing, but we just don't have the capacity all the time to fill, to fill all the sections. The high school's big ask, similar to what Ms. Purchase was talking about, was for a director or an associate principal for curriculum instructional in special programs at Burlington High School. As we're looking to expand the programming and capacity for teachers at Burlington High School, we're looking to add this position that would work with teachers on instructional practices and special programs, such as our mentoring program, the Portrait of Graduate that we're going through right now for our NEAST accreditation. But like Ms. Purchase mentioned, I think having that continuity of instructional coaches or someone who can help have that cohesive focus on instructional practices at the high school would be really important. We have three positions in the athletic department, and Mr. Howard is here to answer any additional questions if there are any. We have a new program, EA Games, online gaming for students, two coaches for that. We have a new programming this spring. We have a boys' volleyball program, which is new to Burlington High School that's running this spring, looking to have two permanent coaches put in for that. And very exciting, I know this was talked about at a recent meeting, but we have a unified sports program. The basketball program's up and running this spring, and we're looking for two permanent, full-time coaches in unified sports program moving forward in the budget.
Are those athletic positions already in the budget? Requested?
I, they're in the, they're supported this spring. I don't think they're permanently in the budget. I think Ms. Kosh could probably better answer that question. But I know they're, they were supported to run this year. I don't think they're permanently in the budget, though. So if we wanted to continue moving forward with it, they would have to be added in.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Questions or comments for the high school? Mark, one question for me on the, you said about the, you wanted a full-time computer science teacher. Was that in addition to the .6 position? Are you just looking to increase the .6 to a 1-0?
I'll do either one, but we're looking to increase it to the full-time, so it would be 1.6.
Okay.
And that would be equivalent to eight sections. And again, we're looking to run about 10.
Thank you.
At the two sections that we don't have.
Questions, comments, or anybody? I'm sure you heard the same thing that I just sent to Ms. Purchase a little while ago. We're getting our wish lists from all the levels, and we're doing our best to try to address them, but there's only so much, so much room in the budget, so we'll obviously have to make some decisions between now and budget time, finalizing the budget about what of the asks from each level we can include in the budget, what we might have to push over. So...
Understood. And the high school, thank you for your continued support of all of our programming.
Thank you. Congratulations, Sean, on the boys' basketball team. Great, that was a great showing. We've, we...
We used to see a hockey team go the distance every few years, but I haven't seen the basketball team do something like that for quite a while.
Thanks, everybody. And it was really great to have you guys at the game. I know the kids appreciated it. I know Coach appreciated it, except for Mr. Porch, who kept yelling at our kids while they were there. But everybody else was welcome.
All right. Okay, thanks for coming out tonight, and thanks for your input, and thanks for your ongoing good efforts. You guys do great work down there. So unless there's anything else for the high school?
I think, I think we have a couple other offshoots of the high school. I know Mr. Adabato's here, and then Mr. Jackling, I see. So if we could just keep, keep going with other high school, if they have something to advocate for in regards to their portions of the budget, I would welcome that now, if that's okay, through the chair.
Joe, Matt, either. Sean?
Sure, I can, I can start. My, my budget, you know, I don't think you... It's not level-funded, I'll admit that. I am asking for a $216 increase, so. But our budget is basically pretty much staying the same. We just have some changes within our budget. We're going to be discontinuing, and I know many of the school committee members have heard of Naviance, but we're going to be discontinuing with Naviance, moving to another program called SCORE. It's got a great reputation. There's a couple other schools doing it, using it, and we've, we've already taken advantage and used it already this year, working with juniors on that now. So that's one of the bigger changes within our budget. We also plan on working with ASCA, the American School Counselor Association. So we have some professional development built in with them. They help the counseling staff to align with national standards. So we're going to be working with ASCA. We're actually working with them this year, but we're going to continue that work with them into next year. And then although not asking for any new positions, I just do want to acknowledge and thank the school committee for their positions over the years. About three years ago, we added a school adjustment counselor. And then last year, we added a new school recovery counselor. And just to reiterate, even what Ms. Purchase said, I think the needs are certainly there with the stress and anxiety. The recovery counselor, in addition to the school adjustment counselor, have been a huge asset to the school. And Chrissy Concepcion's new, new position, working in her role, has been a huge help. There's been a lot of restructuring behind the scenes for support services. I think our at-risk process, identifying students, our reach seems to be much better than it has in past years. So I just wanted to make sure we, that we, in the support services world, acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else? Matt, next?
Yeah, thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. I just wanted to briefly...
Just advocate for the position that Mr. Sullivan mentioned. The high school, really, you know, as we all know, our students need continual support when it comes to their social-emotional well-being. And when we originally had this program where we had our ninth-grade health classes, really served as a great introductory point for that transition from eighth grade up into the high school. We worked close with the counseling staff. We provided them opportunities to come into our classrooms and work with all freshman students, which is now very challenging for them to meet with those kids, like in that kind of format. And we also were, we're also brought in a couple different outside entities to help support our students and help them really transition up into the high school, understand all the expectations and all that the high school has to offer. And so that position, we lost during some shuffling of staff, and being able to get that not only provides that service, but also gives us a lot more flexibility in how we schedule. Right now, our schedule for health and PE is very reflective of a lot of students' special ed needs, and that limits kind of where we can move teachers and where we can provide the best option for our teachers to teach the classes that we are looking to teach. So providing that extra staff member would give us a lot more flexibility to offer classes outside of the traditional time sets that are already offered, which, again, opens our offerings up to more people. So I just wanted to voice my support for that, and thank you for all the support that we've gotten in the past, and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, George, anything you want to?
This is a request for the elementary art classes. I'm requesting $2,100 to cover the addition of the kindergarten students to our program. We've been using the, what would normally go to for five grades for six this year, and we're asking for about $7 per student.
Okay. Sounds affordable. Who else? Oh, John, I'm sorry, I can't see this, I can't see the screen very well. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Thank you very much. Can you, everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Well, first of all, a shout-out from our students and staff at Carnegie Hall. They performed at 1 o'clock today, Shawn Buckslam and the BHS Sabonic Winds Band. So they're having a great time, and a lot of pride and a lot of practice went into this day. So they say hello. And I just wanted to, my budget, the operating budget I presented is level-funded, although I do need to ask for some assistance with the administrative secretary position that was, it was not filled when the, when you all, most of you know Kate McMahon retired a couple of years ago. So it's been, it's been rough. Things are getting back up and running. Activities are running full steam now, and it's quite stressful on myself and the other teachers in the department trying to fill that void. She left some big shoes to fill. So I wanted to just advocate for, for that position.
Thank you, John. Questions or comments?
Are you in New York?
No, I'm not. I'm not. I wasn't able to choose between the band tour and the chorus and orchestra going Friday. They're going to New York. So I couldn't choose one or the other, so I decided I better just, yeah. But I see you're not in New York either, but I'm sure your heart was there today.
Okay. Is anybody else there, Patrick, that I'm missing?
I don't see anybody on the screen, so I'm just looking.
Oh, yeah, Sean, I'm sorry.
I thought he already went. I thought we had enough.
Do you have anything you wanted to add, Sean, other than what you've already said?
No, you guys have been great, and I think Sully, or Mr. Sullivan handled all of it. So I appreciate your time, and we've been here long enough. I don't want to let the next person go.
I have a question.
Sure, sure.
Sean, I want to know if there are any sports teams that you are not budgeting for for next year?
No, actually, the ads for us, right now, we're just, obviously, we just started spring, as you guys know, on Monday, and we're pushing almost to 400 participants right now at the high school level, which is tremendous coming out of COVID. So we are, we are full go, and adding the E-Games program, adding the unified basketball program, and adding the volleyball program is going to open up, you know, over 100 spots for more kids to, to continue with their after-schools and their participation in our programming. So we're bigger and getting bigger every day.
Excuse me, I just want to make sure you're not cutting anything next year, any sporting programs?
We have, we have not needed to do that. Again, different, not cutting anything, but if we had some, you know, like a freshman baseball position that if we didn't have enough kids to fill a team, we're just not running the team, but we're certainly not cutting any programming.
Great, thank you.
Welcome. Thanks again, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming out.
Coming out.
I think next, going down the list here, is Mr. Valano for library.
Okay. Dennis, you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. How are you?
Good. How are all you? Thank you for having me. Today, I'm just going to present the level-funded budget. We did make one adjustment that was just moving a subscription application out of library into curriculum where it really should be. Thanks to Fadeen, Saterio, and the Coop and Ms. Kosh, we've been working on moving some of these around the past few years, just making sure they're in the right departments. And that was the only adjustment. So everything else is level for this year. Not much change in purchasing. We did have a little bit of a change with more digital resources purchased during the pandemic, during the lockdown times. We're still purchasing some traditional print books, though, and that number has kind of come back up a little bit this year. I think the last time I presented, we talked a little bit about that. And this year, I saw the numbers kind of come back a little bit more towards print resources again, but that hasn't really changed too much over the past couple of years. And really, I just want to thank, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the library team, our teacher librarians. You still hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. We have, you know, we have an amazing library team, and they do a lot of the work with what gets purchased out of this budget. So they're incredibly supportive of the students and staff in all our schools. They're a very collaborative team. They work together on a lot of this. And, you know, our libraries, our Learning Commons are great places to be. So I'm very proud of that team, and I just want to thank them here, and so that you all know how hard they're all working in our libraries for our students. But any questions, if you have any? Again, thank you to Fadeen, thank you to Ms. Kosh for helping with this, and nothing significant to ask for, for this year.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions or comments for Dennis on the library budget? Okay, it looks like we're good, Dennis. Thanks for everything. Good job, and keep up the good work. Thank you for, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Thank you all.
And I think the next one, as far as people that are waiting online, is special education. So if Christine is out there.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Christine.
So, just like everyone else, my operating budget is level-funded. However, I know, I would like to advocate, actually, for some of the requests that some of the schools, I know that they're asking for more support staff, especially around social-emotional needs. And I just wanted to add my support to these asks, as I see the need, looking at the numbers of referrals this year at all the grade levels. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Chris?
Hi, Christina. I have a specific question. If you don't know the answer right now, that's fine, just let me know. But I know some of the DSC students are moving up to the middle school, and I'm wondering, how are you providing OT and PT, and what's the cost coming from?
So we would be looking to request an additional OTPT, not only for just that program, but for the district as the needs are growing. And then we would look to, right now, we would be looking at the accommodated budget for that.
Okay, so we'll have to work that out with the selectmen, then, if it's a new program. We'll have to, we'll have to get them in the loop on that. All right, that's why I wanted to know. Thank you.
Just add one to the chair. For accommodated, we're going to go over that at our next meeting. And where the children are sort of just transitioning grade-wise, it's not really a new program. We will have the conversation with them.
Yeah, we just need to, to talk to them, so they understand what we're doing.
Thanks, Nicole. Anything else with Christina? Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
You, too.
So just looking again through the items we haven't covered, I know Wendy from the Science Center had a conflict tonight. If there's any questions regarding, I don't think she had any major changes, if I'm not mistaken, level-funded.
She was level-funded, had no position requests.
And I know Barbara Conley, Health Services, also had a conflict, a late notification from us about tonight, but we could definitely, I'd love to have her online next meeting, if there are questions. But again, just to thank her. But again, just to thank her, and I know you've been great about supporting additions to the nursing department for the last few years, so I'm sure she'd want to thank you as well. And I think, if I didn't miss anything, I'll rely on Nicole to make sure that we're up to operations and plant is the last, last budgetary item for tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, Bob will be here.
Yeah. If we can bring Larry. We'll try to get you out of here, so if you want to come up, we can, we can take you out of turn, because the rest of it's going to be budget stuff, and I'm sure you don't want to listen to that. No, I wouldn't.
We would be surprised.
Yes, yes.
I think he's hoping to vote to take a position on this.
Okay, I have some paper copies here. Anyone need one?
We have color even, Larry.
All right. All right. And apparently, the Burlington Buzz has also posted it, so anybody watching can see the handout.
All right, the floor is yours.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Chairman Murphy, members of the committee. My name for the record is Larry Cohen, and I, tonight, I am here representing a citizens' committee, the Community Preservation Act Committee, an ad hoc committee that has members, town meeting members on it, it has, has a ways and means person on it, it has people from recreation, conservation, historical commission, so forth. So I'm here to make a presentation, a brief presentation, about the Community Preservation Act and its relevance to our schools. At the end of the presentation, I'm going to be asking the school committee to consider a vote of endorsement that we would add to the endorsements of other town boards to Town Meeting in May 2022. We are going to Town Meeting because we would like to see if the Town Meeting will vote positively to have a ballot question in the November 22, 2022 election to determine whether the town will vote to adopt the Community Preservation Act like 187 other communities have in the Commonwealth, representing two-thirds of the state's population. This coming May, we would like the voters to decide whether or not to pass it. The Community Preservation Act, known as CPA, was passed into law by the Commonwealth in 2000 and signed by Governor Salucci. It was crafted to fund projects in four specific areas: open space, recreation, historical preservation, and affordable housing, because these projects were considered by the state to enrich the quality of life in a community. So that was me explaining slide one, and then I'll refer it to various slides in the handout. There's two slides on our page. Slide two, the state collects funds for CPA through a fee on all real estate transactions. So both residents and businesses have been paying into this fund to, at the, for the state level, at the Registry of Deeds. When you buy and sell property since the year 2000, there's been a separate fee for the Community Preservation Act fund. But since we're not one of the communities since the year 2000, we have not been participating in getting any of those funds back. We just pay it on the buying and selling of real estate. Communities that vote to join the Community Preservation Act get access to the state funds by placing a small surcharge on the local real estate taxes. The state then shares its own collected revenues with the member communities. With the state contributions, each dollar raised by the town becomes worth as much as $1.40 to the town, which is a very strong return on investment. In other words, if we put in a dollar, they put in 40 cents, okay? And they send you a check in November. It doesn't mean you have to spend the money on these program areas every year, it just means you have to collect the money and you get a check to put in the bank. That's the incentive part of the program. This committee is proposing a 1.5% surcharge, which is the most common amount that communities adopt. The state allows us to go as high as 3%. Some towns are at 3%, and a few have decided to increase their rate to a 3% surcharge. As I go through the presentation for the next five or eight minutes, it'll become clear why I think the school committee should be interested in this. Slide three. What about the people who cannot afford to pay the extra $75 on a $600,000 valuation home, for example? If you're on fixed income, it does make a difference. So the Community Preservation Act law allows for four types of exemptions. The first two are on the first $100,000 valuation of real estate, both for homes and businesses. Those with low incomes and seniors 60 and over can opt out of paying it by requesting an exemption. For example, a family making less than $77,312 would qualify for a low income exemption. A family of two seniors over 60 years old, making less than $96,640, would qualify for an exemption from paying the surcharge. So those people, if they felt strong enough that they could not or did not want to pay the surcharge on the taxes, they just fill in the form and they can exempt themselves on a yearly basis. On slide four on that second piece of paper, we have talked with the Chamber of Commerce, Government Affairs Subcommittee, many of those in the business community actually come from communities that have the Community Preservation Act, and they realize that a town that offers amenities like walking paths and recreation is good for attracting business. Through the Chamber of Commerce, the business community as contributors to the fund, has expressed an interest that if this was passed by Burlington, they would like to participate in the process of helping to select the projects and make recommendations to Town Meeting. The CPA provides a steady funding source for preserving and improving a community's character and quality of life. So slide five. Here we get to the easy part of the presentation. In the slide five, Hamilton decided to use their CPA funds for an outdoor recreational pool facility. Metapoiset did a shared-use bike path. Marion did a wildlife viewing platform for observing birds and other wildlife. We have Bonstable, and slide six, Bonstable and Amherst, and our next-door neighbor, Bedford, Massachusetts, they actually restored their train station using CPA funds. Aside from the historical and the active and passive recreation, there is the Elm Street housing upgrade that Bedford did. They upgraded their affordable housing, and Tewksbury created some housing for people with disabilities. The slide number eight is an example of a before and after picture. The playground on the left is the old North Union Street Playground. They applied some CPA funds for an upgrade, and they came up with a completely renovated So what are some of the projects that Burlington could do? Well, with respect to open space, it's certainly of interest. You know, I'm, I'm on the Conservation Commission, so these are of particular interest to me. We could construct trail markings and land adjacent to existing conservation areas, make wildlife viewing areas, improve the trails, and we certainly need more parking. A larger project would be to construct the boardwalk into the Vinebrook Wetlands. For more active recreation, the town has talked about bike paths over the many years. They're very expensive, and the funds could be used for that. State-of-the-art playgrounds, adult softball field complex, swimming facilities, better lighting at Simons Park or Marvin Field, improve ADA accessibility to various recreation Slide 11. It's a list of some past projects that would have cost us substantially less. There are, the project adventure course for the schools would be of particular interest, adult exercise equipment at Wildwood Park, that's just a few, a new rubber surface playground, and so forth. So the point is, to the extent that the school budget funds some of these things, perhaps in combination with the Recreation Department, CPA funds could be used where you get a 40% match from the state. So it basically costs less. Okay, is the point. There, there's historical preservation projects. And all of you know where the Francis Wyman School is. This is on slide 12. The Francis Wyman School has, looks very good on the outside, but is in clearly in dire need of a complete restoration inside. And then slide 13 talks about, we talk about the need for affordable housing for seniors, or affordable housing for veterans, or the fact that what we do have in town needs some windows replaced, or we need some preservation projects to keep them going, the funds could be used for that. Now, the slide 14 is probably the most important. When we think of our schools and the Community Preservation Act, it is obvious that there is a relationship between recreation projects and the schools. However, I also point out that a boardwalk into the Vinebrook Wetlands could be the basis of environmental science studies on how necessary wetlands are to our environment. The Francis Wyman House looks pretty good on the outside, but needs major renovation. There could be school projects related to the history of Burlington. So there is some relationship beyond simply even recreation projects. So I'm on my last two slides. If this passes Town Meeting, a local CPA committee would be formed to accept proposals from residents, businesses, individuals, town groups, town committees, town commissions, anyone can submit a project to the committee. They evaluate the priorities for the town, and they would make a recommendation to Town Meeting. Town Meeting is the only one that can approve a project. Every single project goes before Town Meeting as a warrant article, and they decide whether or not to use the funds. There are nine members on the CPA committee. Five are mandated by law, Recreation, Conservation, Historical, Housing, and Planning Board. The other four are optional. It could be a member of the school committee or a representative of the schools, a member of the business community, or any other special need that the town thinks they need. And these can be appointed by the moderator or selectman, depending on how it's set up. So by way of summary, Burlington already pays into the state fund, and if we join, we'll get to actually get some of that money back. Half the towns in Massachusetts have joined, most of them around here, two-thirds of the population is in a CPA town. The average homeowner who has a $600,000 modest home would have to pay $75 per year extra, and I do admit that may be significant to some people. And so it's about $17 per quarter. Lower-income earners can opt out with exemptions. The 1.5% surcharge is what we're proposing with, right now, it looks like there'll be a 42% match probably next year in November. They'll be sending, the state will be sending checks out with a 42% match. So we are asking Town Meeting to let the voters decide, and we are going around to the boards, the commissions, the committees in town, and other interested groups, asking if they would like to endorse to Town Meeting, their name, the name of your school committee would be on a list, one slide, with the other towns and committees that have endorsed it and said, we think this would be good for Burlington, we should let the voters decide it. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Larry. Are there any questions for Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I got one.
Go ahead.
So if, if Town Meeting decides they let it go forward to a ballot question?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be on the November 2022 election, it would be a ballot question, and the committee would enter the phase two of the process, which is educating all the voters who would likely vote, that this is a good thing for Burlington.
Okay, so Town Meeting doesn't get to decide the whole thing, they just get to put it on the ballot?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Got a procedural question for the committee. Mr. Cohen is requesting a vote of the school committee recommending in favor of this. There's nothing on our agenda this evening about a vote to do this, although this discussion was on the agenda. So query to the board whether they want to put this on our agenda for next week or for next meeting to vote, whether or not to recommend favorably on this as opposed to voting it this evening, which is a little unusual in our practice, but I'm not sure it's prohibited given the circumstances. So any thoughts on that, anybody?
Well, I, I think, you know, we typically do a first reading, but if, if we have a brief discussion, I'm, I'm in support of this. I've heard about it before, so I do know a lot about it. I think it's a good thing for Burlington, I do think it's a good thing for the schools. And I think it has the opt-out for people who have some income issues around it. So I'm prepared to vote tonight, but if people would like more time to learn more about it, I'm happy to put it on the next agenda for a vote.
Stole the words out of my mouth.
Yeah, I agree with her, too. I think I also was aware of this prior to the meeting, and I don't personally see a reason to delay it till next week to vote unless someone else does on the committee.
I don't see a reason to delay it. I would, I would delay it if, if I thought that we were recommending that Town Meeting do the whole, you know, do the whole thing, but we're only recommending that Town Meeting let the public decide, and I have no problem at all with that. So sure, we can vote.
Okay.
So Martha, make a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion that the Burlington School Committee endorse the proposal by the CPA committee to bring their proposal to Town Meeting in May. Is that what, is that the motion you need, Mr. Cohen?
It would be to endorse that Town Meeting should vote positively to allow the voters, should agree to allow the voters to decide in November.
I'd like to change my motion to say that the, a motion for the school committee, whatever, what he said. Chris is really good at this, so I'll let you figure it out.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Larry, thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
All right.
Now we're going to revert back to the outstanding budget items. So which ones are still on the board, Nicole?
Just operations and in-plan.
Okay.
Through the chair. I was told earlier that if I was the last to go tonight, that I would get an increase in my budget, so I happily accepted that.
Is that a motion?
I think I heard that. I'm not sure. Maybe it was something similar to that.
I heard it, too.
No, unfortunately, I do not have a level funded budget in front of you tonight. I have two parts of a budget. One is contracted services, which does have an increase of about 4%, which equates to roughly $18,000. roughly $18,000. The reason there's an increase is due to contracted services, which has been level-funded for a few years. Services have gone up. Our contracts have gone up. You know, this is approximately a half a million-dollar budget, so I don't want to undermine that $18,000 is minimal. But given that what we're seeing for services and supplies throughout the country, I think $18,000 is a pretty modest increase for this type of a budget. Again, my supply budget is level-funded, so, again, just the $18,000 increase approximately for my contracted services.
That it?
I could answer questions. I could talk more about it, but that's just for that.
All right, great. Thank you, Bob. Questions or comments? Oh, Nicole?
There is just one other line item under that, the rec-maintenance, organic field maintenance that we have been. And so, I had spoken with Brendan a couple of months ago, and I think that they were ready to move to the second field. And he said, in order to do that, they'd need an additional $5,000.
Right. They had mentioned that to me, which, and stopped there. But, no, I figured, I didn't realize it was going to be on this budget, but they did make that request. They're looking to do to the rear field at Memorial School what they are currently doing to Francis Wyman, which is the non-toxic kind of extra, extra care, to try to, I haven't been back there recently, but from what Brendan told me, that the weeds are starting to take over a little bit back in the rear field behind the Memorial School, and they want to try to get a handle on that before it gets, before it gets too bad. And to do that, it requires some extra time and some extra material, which we agreed to contribute towards last year when they did it to Francis Wyman, and they're seeking $5,000 annual contribution from us to assist them to pay for the extra material for the fields behind Memorial School. So, that, I assume, would show up by an additional $5,000 line item in Bob's budget. So, don't necessarily have to vote on that tonight, but that's, that's the reason for a $5,000 increase that we're going to see in Bob's budget as that comes across the table. They assured me it was
Organic.
All organic material, and that's what they're using at the Francis Wyman as well.
Then we can pay for it.
So, other than that, anything else for Bob? Any questions or anything? All right.
Do you need to go back to?
To what?
We passed over a couple of things.
Oh, yeah, right, right. Is that the end of the budget, Nicole? We cover everything?
Yes, just an amendment to the calendar.
Oh, yes. Well, okay, let's, before we do that, we'll finish up in number eight. We've got a Fox Hill School Building Committee update. Is there anything for us, Bob, on that?
Nothing new to add. We are still waiting to get on MSBA's board. I double-checked with John Denizio, and also our representative from MSBA. All of our paperwork, all of our submissions, all of our requirements have been, you know, submitted and confirmed, received by MSBA. So, again, we're just waiting for confirmation on which date we can get onto one of their board meetings, again, either in April and/or in May. So, I'll update the board once I have confirmation.
Okay. Anybody, Martha?
Yes, I've spoken with Mr. Kuna about this, but I would like to request that we schedule a school building committee meeting, and it may not make sense to do it before we get the official vote from MSBA, but perhaps, once you know their date, we could schedule it to be that week, or right away after that. I really think we need to start moving on this. It's a long enough process that we don't want to be delaying. And I also, again, spoke with Mr. Kuna about this, but I'd like to suggest that the school building committee be invited on a tour of some of the school systems that have recently built new buildings, that are sustainable and energy-efficient. And I know personally that the Acton-Boxborough District has a Director of Operations who's offered to do that, and Bob's going to be in touch with him. But I wanted to put that out, because I think that we can get, you know, we can broaden our vision, or understand what our options are for building new schools and renovating our schools to be as healthy as possible for our students and for the environment. So, thank you, Mr. Kuna, for following up on those things, too.
Jumping around a little bit on Section 8D, we have an item to amend the fiscal '23 budget calendar. Is that from you, Nicole?
Yes. So, there's a couple of changes on this, and if you look at the one that was passed out hard copy to you tonight, because the one that was in your packet didn't move our Ways and Means budget until after our public hearing.
Is this the same as what was in the packet, you're saying?
No, it's
An updated since?
Yes, it moves our hearing before Ways and Means for budget after our public hearing. So, the change on this is, originally, April 12, we had a public hearing on budget, which we're going to be pushing to the 26th of April, and so that we can cover the remaining operating budgets in the accommodated accounts of the April 12 meeting.
Do you need a vote on this, or is this an FYI? Do we, do we, yeah, okay. Anybody have any questions on the, on the calendar? Everybody okay with that? Oh, Roger.
Another question.
How are you?
Good. When will the accommodated accounts budget be reviewed? That's, I don't see it listed on the schedule.
Next.
The April 12 meeting.
April 12 meeting, Roger.
Okay, great. I need to talk to Steve about when we, the full Ways and Means can do the review. I think the Ways and Means, some committee needs a bit more time than one, one day to do, to finish up the budget and the capital items. But when Steve's back from New York, I'll see if I can set the date. Probably, if it works for him, it might be May 4, which is kind of close to Town Meeting, but I'll check with Steve.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. At my desk, and you might have already talked about this, capital warrant articles, is this for discussion tonight, or is that just being distributed?
So, it wasn't on our agenda for this evening, but we do have a print that, we have to submit by Friday, any placeholders. So, Bob distributed that to you this evening.
Do we know, do we, do we, have we received from the town a number yet, as to what our allotment's going to be for these, do you know?
Yes, but it did just change.
Again, through the chair, if you don't mind. I've had a few different conversations with the towns accountant and assistant town manager, Mr. Denizio, and that number right there had fit into the most recent guideline that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So.
So, would you like a placeholder vote based on these, on these here?
Through the chair, if I may. I think we potentially skipped 8B, which was a BHS update, and then if we could, under maybe new business, if you choose, or any time that you feel it fits, then sure, I'd discuss them with the committee.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I was thinking the BHS update was what we did with Mr. Sullivan. But, yeah, go ahead. Why don't you do that, and then we can do, we can do the one.
Sure. Sorry to even bring this up. While I don't have much news to update you on, we did touch base on the fact that we got numbers report back for the BHS feasibility study for the high school HVAC system. I've been in touch in numerous meetings with the company, and, again, they've continued to go through those details with a fine-tooth comb. So, what's going to be presented to myself, and obviously to you all as the school committee, is the full report that has not only all of the triggers, all of the recommendations of the architectural and mechanical firms, but then also, like, a completed and finalized dollar value, and an itemized dollar value of what potential cost could be, again, for the HVAC system here at the high school. So, it's been a lengthy process, obviously, but just to let the school committee know that, you know, as I've said numerous times before, I hope the end is near. We have all the pieces of the final report, except for the final report. So, I think the final report, like I said, is, is that, that missing, missing piece. But, again, I think that we could have future conversations. We could have conversations tonight, if need be. But like I said, that final report really will give us enough information, I believe. You know, what I think we already know as a committee is, is that, you know, the needs of the high school are not going away, regardless of how big or small we choose that project to be. If we're looking at just HVAC, I think that we heard the truth that we didn't want to hear, was that we were going to hit some 30-30 rules and hit our triggers, which would force us to provide other updates to the building, regardless of our liking or not. That being said, you know, I think the school committee and our community will have to have some bigger conversations as to, you know, how big of a project we would be looking to fund. And I do just want to remind the committee and viewers that we still have one month to submit our Burlington High School statement of interest for MSBA this year as well. So, that's, that's kind of all I have for the BHS update.
Thank you, Bob. Questions, Martha?
I, I want to, thank you, Bob. I think that's a, a good summary of where we're at. I just, it goes without saying, but I want to say that as soon as you do have the full report, if you'd be sure that it gets on the agenda, so that we'll be able to have that full discussion, because we want to make sure it gets posted. I also, Mr. Kuna was kind enough to give me a printout of the expenses part of this report. As he's told us over the last several months, he's gotten different parts of the report. This was sort of the final piece that needed to be put together to figure out what kind of costs we're looking at. And I went through it, and, in fact, a majority of the big expenses are to update our high school to meet codes. And the vast majority of those codes are ADA codes, which is Americans with Disabilities Act. So, in this case, I think it's important for us to say, yes, it's expensive, and, yes, it's a long time overdue for us to make this building accessible to people with disabilities. So, it's another reason, in top of the fact that I'm afraid the boilers are going to die before we get a new HVAC system, and then on top of the fact that we need to do science classrooms, which aren't even in this report, I don't think, we really should be moving into the 21st century and providing an accessible building. So, it's not an easy conversation, because it's a lot of money, and we need to have those conversations in town and figure out what's going to be happening. But I just felt it was really important for us to acknowledge that this building is not accessible in many, many ways, and I'm not going to enumerate, but it's an important thing that we should be doing as a town, to make the building available to all of our students and all of our community members. So, I just wanted to, that's, that's what really stuck out for me, beyond how expensive everything costs. Another thing is that I have heard from a couple of people, and I don't think most people are here, given that it's going to cost us, in this 80, 90 million-dollar range to do this project, does it make sense for us to look at a new high school? And I, I think that it's important for people to understand that a new high school would be $250,000 to $300 million. So, you know, and, so I just wanted to kind of put that out, because there are people, of course, we want to say, well, what would make more sense? It doesn't mean we couldn't continue to have that conversation, but I do want us to have a little comparison with that. And, so, I just wanted to add those two things, and I look forward to having more discussions and moving forward with this project, because when we had the master plan done on all of our buildings, the high school is, was the top priority identified by the people who look at these kind of projects. Thank you.
And I'd add to that, we've got a practical problem of where we put a new high school, even if we wanted to pay the $300 million to build one. Any other questions or comments on the, on the high school update? Okay, thank you, Bob. So, if I'm correct, we've got to pass placeholders for these 12 warrant articles to get them under the gun for next Friday? Is that the?
There is a deadline this Friday for the placeholders to be on to the town hall by closing, right? So, that being said, yes, we can continue conversations, but in order to put the placeholders there.
Okay.
We have to do them separately.
I believe we have to do each of them separately. Now, the, the, the subject of each of the warrant articles, we haven't really had much discussion about, you know, some of them we have, some of them we haven't. Typically, at least the way that I've always looked at it, I look to the administration to identify areas of capital needs. I look at the number that we get from the town, is what we get assigned to being able to spend on our capital needs, and then we try to match it up as best we can.
What was the number?
The one down the bottom here is what Bob said, was the 2293.
Really? It's a lot.
We've got quite a bit of free cash that has accumulated over these past couple of years.
We've got to beef this up before Friday.
So, if the, if the, if the committee is willing, I think what we'll need is a motion for each one of these
All right.
To put them on the Town Meeting agenda for May, as capital warrant articles.
All right, so I move that we approve a placeholder 23-1 Francis Wyman Playground in the amount of $290,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0.
I move that we approve a placeholder 23-2 Computer Science for all CS4
All.
All? Uh-huh. Curriculum supplies, $150,000.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
I move we approve a placeholder 23-3 HVAC controller upgrade, $108,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0.
I move we approve a placeholder 23-4 Pine Glen Bathroom Repair, $65,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0 in favor.
I move we approve a placeholder 23-5 Pine Glen HVAC, $500,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0 in favor.
I move we approve a placeholder 23-6 Burlington Sports Field Master Plan, $70,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0-0.
I move we approve a placeholder 23-7 BHS Music Floor Reconstruction, $450,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0-0.
I move we approve a placeholder 23-8 Fox Hill Portable Repairs, $160,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0 in favor.
I move we approve a placeholder 23-9 Scoreboards for Sports Fields, $110,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0-0.
I move we approve a placeholder 23-10 Activity Bus and Utility Vehicles, $145,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0-0.
I move we approve a placeholder 23-11 Bleaches Marshall Simons Middle School Field, $220,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0-0.
I move we approve a placeholder 23-12 Visitor Control Access System, $25,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? And that passes 5-0-0.
Where's that for, Bob? The last one?
District-wide.
All right. I assume we'll get more backup on those items as we move forward, but at least we made the deadline to get it on the warrants. Anything else? Patrick?
Through the chair. I know Dr. Conti would be angry with me if I didn't mention the thanks of the district, Mr. Murphy, for your 27 years on the school committee. I know this is your last meeting and I feel fortunate to have worked with you over the last 15 years in multiple roles and it's hard to do service to, you know, everything you've done to support the town in this work in 27 years and especially over the last couple of years in a pandemic. I know, I appreciate your leadership and everybody in central office, so thank you.
Thank you. Told Eric not to say anything, so he foisted upon you.
He's not here, so.
No, thank you very much.
Also, through the chair, if I could, I wanted to personally thank you for so many different things, the time that I've been able to spend with you and the support that you've lent at me on a professional and personal level I'm grateful for. I'm a little salty over here, you already know, that you won't be with us a little bit longer, but I'm in the deepest gratitude I have for you and respect I have for you. So thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Very nice, thank you. All right, enough of that.
Just you wait.
Any old business anybody wants to bring forward? Seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We have adjourned.